So I'll call this thing to the City Council of Arroy Grande to order. And if we can have roll call, please.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Here.
Councilmember George is absent. Councilmember Barnage?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Guthrie?
Here.
And Mayor Ray Russum is absent.
All right, and if you could join me in a moment reflection. Thank you. And yet now if you'll rise if you, if you can, and join me in the flag salute. Ready, begin. So is anyone interested in changing the agenda? Any, any staff changes to the agenda?
No, thank you.
All right. And although that we adopt all ordinance ordinances read in title only. Is there a second?
Second.
All votes in favor say aye.
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 All right. So we'll move on to the special presentations, and tonight we do have honorary proclamation recognizing February twenty twenty four as Black History Month. So if Cheryl Vines and Roxanne Perez could join me here at the, at the podium, I will. So this is an honorary proclamation recognizing February twenty four as Black History Month, whereas the City of Arroy Grande is welcome. Whereas the City of Arroy Grande is welcoming, inclusive, and dedicated to improving the quality of life for those who live, work, and visit here. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment in nineteen twenty six of the Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continuing to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas the ASALH was established in twenty twenty four, the twenty twenty four national theme of observance of this year's Black History Month as the African Americans and the arts, spanning the many impacts Black Americans have had in the visual arts, music, cultural movements, and more. And whereas the City of Arroy Grande continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all individuals past, present, and future are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. And whereas the City of Arroy Grande is proud to honor the history and contributions of African Americans in our community throughout our state and nation, now therefore being resolved that I, for Karen Ray Russen, Mayor of the City of Arroy Grande, do hereby proclaim February twenty twenty four as Black History Month, and encourage all seller, but all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous, and prosperous for all. Thank you for being here, and if you would like to say some words, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. So I'm Cheryl Vines, and I am the, one of the co-founders and secretary and win chair for the National Association for the Advancement of Color People. And so a lot of people know it as the NAACP. So we're happy to be here, and, um, uh, the Mayor Pro Tem did say, give some of the history of what I was going to say, and, and that's fine. But I just wanted to add on in nineteen eighty six that Congress passed a joint resolution declaring February National Black History Month. And presidents have issued annual proclamations for National Black History Month every year since nineteen ninety six. And something that you might not know is that, um, originally it was just celebrated for one week in February. And the reason for that is President Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass' birthdays happened to be in the same, on the same day, or in the same month. I, I think it's the same day as well, but, um, so they wanted to celebrate um, the history, you know, of Black people in America. And so they named, uh, for, just for one week, and now in nineteen eighty six it became, you know, for a whole month. Um, so I don't know if you know anything about, um, the NAACP, but our branch has, um, been around since, uh, May, uh, twenty seventeen. And we're a countywide organization. Uh, so we've, uh, from Napa Mo all the way, you know, to North County. And we really focus on race injustice, uh, fighting racial injustices by building Black political, social, and economic power. We are an inclusive organization, so any and everyone can join. Uh, we concentrate on education, environment, and climate justice, inclusive economy, uh, mobility, and thriving Black economy, health and well-being. And, um, we would like to thank you for this proclamation, and we're looking forward to seeing some of you at some of our events throughout February.
Hello, my name is Roxanne Perez, and I'm Cheryl Vines' sister. Um, I, uh, we've been in the area for a lot, many years, and, uh, we've enjoy, I've enjoyed my time in this area. I, I have had the opportunity to go to, to visit other areas, to move to other areas, but I have not done it. I like it right here. So, um, I'm, we're, I'm, I'm just happy that, uh, you know, I was able to grow up in, in an area that had, where there was, you know, peace and, and not a lot of, uh, uh, you know, things that were negative, okay? And then so, so I've been a resident of this area. Uh, oh, it's probably been close to maybe forty ye, no, it's more than forty years. It's a lot more years than that.
Sixty some.
It's sixty some.
She doesn't want to give her age.
See, I didn't want to give my, my age, okay? So I enjoy living in the area. I enjoy, um, you know, it's just so much to enjoy, the beauty, the, of the, of nature, all kinds of things. And so it's hard for me to actually leave, and I don't have any, um, uh, plans to leave. So I'd just like to thank you all for all you've done and, um, hope that everything, uh, works out well and that we, uh, continue to have a good relationship and, uh, things will, uh, grow and pe, the, our, um, the economy will, will improve and, and I'm just very happy to be here and hope that in some way that maybe I could help, uh, in this, with this situation also.
Okay, well, thank you for the proclamation, and do we get a copy or did we already?
We're gonna get it signed, and then we'll mail it to you.
Oh, okay, great.
The mayor's not here to sign it.
Oh, okay, and you have our mailing address. Just want to make sure. Okay, I'm sure you do, because we've received them before. So thank you, and, um, we do have some events planned for February, and of course, our Juneteenth celebration will be on June fifteenth, so mark your calendars, and we'll be reaching out to you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
With, with that, we'll move on to the city manager's communicated report.
Well, thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the City Council, Matt Downing, your city manager. Uh, that's still interesting to say, uh, here being the, uh, the second meeting of my, of my tenure, so. Um, a couple of updates for you this evening. Uh, over on the public works front, I did want to let you know that the traffic, traffic loops and sensors at the Mason and Branch Street intersection have been repaired and are now operational. And we had talked about that previously, so that should help traffic flow in that area. Uh, over in community development, the planning commission did recently make some recommendations to the city council regarding, uh, both the formula business ordinance and the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, so those will be coming to the council in the near future. Uh, we do anticipate that the formula business ordinance will be, uh, heard by the council in February and the ADU ordinance in March. Over at the Five Cities Fire Authority, I do want to share that we did have a very nice retirement celebration for Chief Lieberman last Friday, uh, to celebrate his nine years with the authority, as well as over thirty years in public service. Um, and we are currently recruiting for a fire chief, uh, so if you know of anybody, send them, send them our way. And then also, we do have a special board meeting on January twenty ninth. And then last but certainly not least, uh, we did have a very wonderful employee recognition event earlier today, uh, where we did acknowledge the city's employees of the year, as well as those with specific, uh, years of service milestones for us. And so I, I thank, uh, a couple of you for being there, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Guthrie and Councilmember Barnage. Um, it was a great event, and it was nice, uh, being back with the city, uh, to see everybody and, and catch up with some folks, and uh, it, it was a really good event. So we also thank our party planning people, as we call them, for putting on such a wonderful event, and the council's support in having those types of events. It helps us build our employee culture, so. Uh, thank you very much, and that will conclude my comments this evening.
Any questions or clarifications?
Just a quick question on the signal. Um, I was just, I went through it right now. It seems like it's still pretty long. Is that, is that going to change?
I'll pass that over to Mr. Bill Robeson.
Thank you. Um, so we can adjust the timing. Uh, we just put the loops back in the ground. The timers are back in, in place, or, or set. Um, but, uh, we'll, we'll start to look at those a little bit more. I noticed this morning when it came in that, um, maybe they're a little long, so we can adjust the, the seconds, um, and, um, make it so that it's more efficient.
Um, and then just a quick comment, the employee recognition lunch that we had. I just have to say that I think that was the best. I think they just get better every year, but I don't know. I think that was like far, head and shoulders above the past, so. Anyway, I, uh, really enjoyed myself, thanks to the staff that worked so hard to put that together. It was so obvious. Food was amazing, so thank you.
I'm very sorry to have missed, uh, the employee luncheon today. I had a family situation I had to deal with, but, um, I, I did attend last year. It was wonderful, and looking forward to the next time. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will move on to council reports. And since the mayor is not here, I will start. So start with, uh, let me get my notes here. Central Coast, uh, Community Energy has not met yet. We will meet for the first real meeting, uh, in February. Um, I did miss the RAC, uh, the Water Resources Advisory Committee meeting in December. I did review the agenda real quickly. Uh, there were no, the only real action item was to allow, uh, three new members to, who, who had applied to, to start filling out some of the empty seats. I will, I'll give an update, uh, in, in February of, if there's something that comes through in the minutes that I missed there. Uh, Council of Governments, or Slow COG, and, and, uh, Slow RTA. Um, so sort of combining the December and January meetings together, because most of what we did in December was set up stuff to then vote on in January. I think the, the big deal was setting up the, uh, priority list, uh, for the, for the big projects that we're going to be seeing going, going forward in, in twenty twenty four and, and set up for the future as well. For us, I think the, the key items are the roundabout at Avala, where the Avala exit, uh, was a little bit short on funding, so they added some additional funding for that, and so that should be starting, I'm gonna say any day, but, you know, any day probably means June, but, yeah. The U.S. one-on-one mobility lane, which is the extra lane that, uh, we were talking about there in Pisno, I've been talking about for a long time, that is fully funded, based on the original estimates. Um, and that is set to go forward in twenty twenty seven. At this point, there were no additional funds needed for that. The Bob Jones Trail was a little bit short on funding, so there was extra funding afforded for that, but it is facing a pretty major obstacle due to a property acquisition easement, um, property easement acquisition problem. And then finally, on two twenty seven, the Los ranchos road roundabout is, is funded and in design. Um, in the North County, uh, almost all of the money is going out on forty one, the, the forty one Y project in the Adlo. I think we're up two hundred and twenty-five million dollars is being spent there in the next couple, couple, three years. The other discussion, major discussion was the Betterment's Grant Program, which, um, if you're not familiar with that, that, that is a, a setup of small grants designed to help communities either finish off a project. Um, if you'll remember, we actually got a Betterment Grant to do some crosswalks, which have now gotten folded into the, um, uh, in, into the Halcyon Complete Streets Program. Um, a couple of places, uh, there's some funding come, carved out right away for Grover Beach and Tascadero for their downtown, uh, projects, which are, uh, have, have, uh, have already gone out to bid and came back a little bit high, and therefore they needed, uh, an extra, uh, between the two of them, I think it was two and a quarter million, but there's, there's still eight million dollars left over for what are now competitive grants for each city. A grant can't be more than a million dollars, so these will, it's hard to think of that as a small project, but, uh, but I guess it is. Um, and certainly we, we will be, I think we already have a, 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 a plan in place that we'll be submitting once, once we've approved it here at the council, uh, which should have, should have a pretty good chance of being funded there. IWMA, um, so we formally, since thou, all the cities have signed off on the, uh, on, on the agreement to bring a county back in, we formally, uh, canceled our MOU with them that we were providing the services that we are now going to provide them because they're a member. Um, we did have a couple of changes to job descriptions. We did have a long closed session, uh, on a public employment issue. And the county will formally join the board in February, uh, meaning Jimmy Pauling will be re, representing them. I also went to the Reach Development Roundtable. Lot of interesting stuff, uh, taken there, a lot of building, building up. There's, there's a lot going on at Vanderburg. I'll just tell you that, a whole lot going on at Vanderburg, and a whole bunch of support for the, for that will be necessary in that area to support what's going on there, so, um, that in particular, but they've, uh, I didn't realize this until this meeting, they've expanded the, the reach of Reach, um, to include South Santa Barbara County. I think this is mostly around, they've now added, uh, chips manufacturing as a major, uh, part of their, of their push, and, uh, there's a lot of, there, there's a lot of, uh, opportunity for that in the, in the South Santa Barbara County area. So that concludes my reports. Will then go on to Councilmember Barnage.
Uh, let's see, the Zone Three meeting, uh, was canceled, uh, not really much to talk about, so we're gonna meet in March. Um, we probably saw this in the, your packet, the numbers might be a little different, but the lake is ninety-six point two percent full. Um, at least it was when that was, that was written on the Zone Three agenda. We did have a little bit of a packet. Um, I attended the Homeless Services Oversight Council meeting on January seventeenth, and lots of stuff going on there. Um, there was a public comment that was pretty, um, important, that there was, there were people, there were multiple people there that, um, shared the same thoughts. There was an arrest recently made at a service center for the unhoused in, not here, I, I think, in, maybe in San Luis Obispo. And the speakers asked, and I've already talked to, um, uh, Representative at Arroy Grande Police Department, just that if there was a, an arrest imminent, um, to maybe arrest the person after the, after the appointment with the, um, shelter or the case manager, just because when the arrest happened, it caused everyone at the shelter to leave. Um, and so it had some effect, and it was, um, I think it was an evening that was raining or something. So that was just, they wanted us, the public, the public speakers wanted us to pass that on in our cities, um, to law enforcement, so that's just a note. Um, there was three hundred and sixty thousand dollars allocated from the county, uh, five different grants and pots of money, and, um, three hundred and sixty thousand just to Five Cities Homeless Coalition for rapid rehousing, street outreach, and emergency shelter. So that's really good news. Um, they, we've been asking the county for a long time to have a social media presence, so we can sort of push out a good news information, and they finally do. So if you do have social media, it's on Instagram and Facebook. It's at Slow Co. Homeless. Um, and that's gonna be, becoming a little bit more robust as they, uh, sort of develop that. They do have a communication and data department that is new at the county. Um, let's see. So then, what's really germane to the, to South County, Five Cities Homeless Coalition, the warming center is currently open, uh, when it rains or it drops below forty-five degrees. I think it was hosted at the Women's Club and then also at a local church. Recently, the permanent warming center, the permanent during the winter warming center on Grand Avenue is almost due to open. They're still under construction. Perhaps late February is what I'm told. Um, the warming center continues to be open up until, uh, March thirty-first. Um, and, let's see. Average, total nights that it's been open this season are six. Average number of guests are only ten. The cabins for change occupancy right now is twenty-one people. Total since opening, thirty-four people have been housed in permanent housing that were housed at the cabins for change, so that's some good news. Just the December stats for Five Cities Homeless Coalition, four hundred and seventy-three walk-ins to the office, which is pretty incredible. Um, ninety-seven coordinated entry survey, surveys taken. They prevented evictions of twenty, twenty-one households. And their, uh, Five Cities Homeless Coalition is case managing forty-two youth that are homeless. Um, and, let's see, make sure that's. I think that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Thank you. Um, it's always so good to hear the good news, um, regarding the housing situation, and forty-two youth is an awful lot. It's sad to know there's the need, but it's just so awesome to know it's being met. Yeah. Um, let's see, I, I don't know if this is appropriate, but I'm just gonna ask, and you can tell me. The issue with someone being arrested, was that a warrant, or was someone like disturbing the peace? Because I could understand why that couldn't wait. Don't ask.
What, the limited information I have is that I think that, that was, uh, perhaps a warrant. It was, it was, and they knew the person was going to be there, which is, which is fine. There's extenuating circumstances. I think it was just it caused this huge ruckus, and they were trying to help other people, but people were all spared, so.
Of course, of course, that totally makes sense. Thank you. Um, just in terms of my reports, which are brief, as, as usually are, um, Air Pollution Control District meets actually tomorrow morning, so I'll have to give an update next time. Um, South County Chamber of Commerce always has a lot going on. The main things I would say at this point, they have a, actually tomorrow, a January mixer, which is a mocktail mixer, which seems great for January, uh, at the Clark Center from five to seven. Um, and they're also doing the Rise and Shine, uh, slow, uh, South County, sorry, on February seventh, and that's obviously in the morning, seven-thirty to nine, so. That's all I have to report at this point. Thank you.
All right, and with that, we will move on. With that, we'll move on to community comments and suggestions. Uh, this is public commentary for items that are not on the agenda. Um, I, I guess I'll read the whole thing. Uh, public commentary impitate the members of the community to present issues, thoughts, and suggestions on matters not scheduled on this agenda. Comments should be limited to those matters that are within the jurisdictions of the city council. Members of the public may provide public comment in person or remotely by joining the Zoom meeting using one of the messages provided. Please, please raise your hand when you indicate your desire to speak. So I'll start here with our, one of our, any of our two people in the audience who have any comments for public comment.
I would like to jump in. Our mic has been well-loved at the podium, and it is still broken, however it is picking up audio, so if any of you provide comment later, you're gonna have to hold it unfortunately, but it is working, so.
Thank you for that. Any takers? All right, with that, we'll check in online.
Okay, we do have one member of the public on Zoom with their hand raised, so let me allow them to talk. All right, Candace, um, you are now able to provide comment. Yes.
...
So, uh, the, um, speed bumps, uh, there's a standard that requires a distance from driveways. And there's many driveways. A lot of them are close together. These properties are close together. So, uh, it doesn't allow us to do something that's meeting those engineering standards. And when we start to go outside of those standards, we become liable for issues like damage to cars or slowing of response times potentially. Although I think, uh, the fire department is probably able to move through there generally pretty quickly. But, um, there's a lot of issues that come in, in play there. But, um, our police have been out several times, but we've done speed surveys. There's no real, there's no indication of speeding i- in the area from the data that we've collected. And, um, I think that there were, um, six traffic surveys that have been done over a couple of years. We put in additional twenty-five mph markings on the street, which, uh, s- city staff has done. And that's not really a standard either because you're going through a residential, um, street, which is always twenty-five miles per hour. Wanted to reinforce that to people. There were, uh, surveys shown of the vehicles per day and the vehicles per day since twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one have dropped from six twenty-five down to five hundred fifty-five vehicles, uh, from a survey shown in twenty-twenty-three. We also got a lot of feedback from people about, uh, multifamily, um, project that was existing in the neighborhood. It had had significant remodel, um, and a lot of, uh, the points that people were bringing up were alleviated, uh, because of that project, but, uh, maybe things have changed. So, um, we've tried several things. We're, we're still committed to trying, uh, to work with the neighborhood. So, uh, Candace is probably listening and, and we'll try to schedule something with her over the next few weeks and, um, and try something, uh, maybe unconventional, but we'll, we'll just have to, to see how that proceeds. So thank you. I can answer any more questions if you have any.
Are we okay to? Okay, um, so I just was, if you have the information, Bill, and if not, you can get it to the, the council, full council later. But I was just curious. I know that there's been work. I know that staff has worked with them in the past and, um, but the, so we have done speed surveys?
That's correct.
Okay, how many have we done?
Uh, six, six are shown from the PD, that, or police department that, um, they've shared with us.
Okay, and those are, those are probably done the last couple of years, different times, different days a week, summer, winter, right?
Police department has also gone out and monitored, patrolled, um, and they gave a ticket. And it was to a resident. Um, so, uh, it, it's, it's been a challenge. So, uh, we'll, we'll continue on, but I can answer any more questions.
Well, so I guess I would just ask, according to the speed surveys, there's not at this time, anything warranted to be done because of what the data, the data we've collected.
Correct.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you, Bill.
Sure.
Thank you. So first of all, of course, we appreciate all, all the work you've done. And I know this is, it sounds like you guys have been working on this a long time. I guess I'm still just curious. I don't doubt the sincerity of, of the folks calling in. They, they've also done a, a pretty amazing amount of work on their own. And I'm just wondering, do you have, I mean, maybe you can't say this, but do you have an idea of? What is, I'm just wondering, I guess, what, what is causing their concern? And could it possibly be just the volume of, of traffic that goes through that neighborhood because of the number of dwellings?
You know, I, I'll, we'll renew our conversations with them and we will, um, we'll update the, the council. But I think the, the main, uh, point that I would like to make tonight is we've done a lot of work. We've cooperated, we've coordinated with the neighborhood. They've done a lot of work, uh, like you said, council members, Seacrest. And we'll continue on, uh, trying to find a solution.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
And I'll, I'll just request it to, if, if you could send us maybe copy us all on the speed survey. Just to see what, what, what the data says there. Okay, with that. Go on to. Oh, consent agenda. So consent agenda items that we generally, uh, adopt altogether. And I will check with Mike. If anybody want to pull anything for special comment or, okay. Well, then I'll entertain a motion. So yes, I will open it up to the public for, uh, comment on the consent agenda items. Seeing no one here, anyone online?
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no members of the public anymore, so no comment.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor Protem, I would move approval of the consent agenda, which is items nine A through nine F.
Good second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. So if I could just add a comment, I do, do want to congratulate staff on another perfect, uh, audit. Uh, I think that's mi- many years in a row now, but it is good to see that, that going forward. So with that, if we can have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnage?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Guthrie, Mayor Protem Guthrie.
Yes. That's me. That's right. All right. So we will then move on to, there's no public hearings, there's no old business. And we'll move on to new business, which is consideration of the twenty-twenty-four pavement priority project list and finding the projects is not subject to environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act. Thank you. So is this one of the two of you?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Council. My name is Shannon Sweeney, City Engineer. And I'm here to speak about the twenty-twenty-four pavement maintenance program. And I bring to you, uh, for consideration, a restrategization, restrat- that's a hard word to say. Uh, the twenty-twenty-two pavement maintenance plan that you've approved previously. And I'll explain why, uh, given that we have, um, some extra funding to put into this project. Why restrategizing makes sense at this time. And also to identify a priority list for pavement improvement projects to be considered for the upcoming twenty-twenty-four pavement management project. I suspect that many people know that the rating of the pavement is done through the pavement condition index, but I'm happy to share it again. A pavement is rated from a scale of zero to a hundred, where a hundred is brand new pavement and zero is there is no more asphalt left. And then you can see this scale of good, fair and poor. Our goal is a PCI average through our community of eighty. I'd be happy if we were in the seventies, but we're not. Neither is California. California does this, uh, survey, the latest that was gathered throughout the state of California was in twenty-twenty. And the average weighted pavement condition index was sixty-six. Ours is a paltry fifty-seven. So a little bit of background, we've been doing our pavement, uh, maintenance programs for quite some time. In two thousand and ten, we had a PCI of seventy-one, did it again in two thousand and sixteen and it dropped to sixty-eight. And again in twenty-twenty-two and it dropped, uh, to fifty-six. Uh, we have about seventy-three centerline miles of pavement throughout the community. And, uh, the twenty-twenty-two pavement maintenance plan indicated that we had a seventy-four million dollar backlog of pavement work. And that's reflective of that PCI fifty-six. That means that there's a lot that needs considerable work and for us to catch up and be in that eighty range, we would need seventy-four million dollars. There is a preferred pavement maintenance approach and this diagram demonstrates that. So, um, this shows a curve of pavement that if you ignored it, that's that green line. It would fall from a PCI of a hundred down to zero in about twenty years. But if you caught it, uh, before it falls to a PCI of eighty and you did say a slurry seal, then it'd bring it up and then it'd fall a little bit. You do another slurry and do that about every six to eight years. And you can actually extend this all the way to almost thirty years, uh, before you need to do something maybe a little bit more robust, such as a slurry seal with some digouts or a cape seal or some kind of treatment. Not a rehabilitation or an overlay, but you're still in the slurry, um, range. And doing slurries is about three dollars per square yard. And then after thirty years, you have to apply sixteen to forty-two dollars per square yard for, um, that more robust maintenance. But you got pavement that's lasting about thirty years and it never drops past that good condition. So it all stays relatively nice. Unfortunately, this is our maintenance scenario. So you can see that same green line running from a hundred down to zero in twenty years. When you wait until, you know, you're in the PCI, the, the twenties to forties. Now it's going to cost you a hundred and seventeen dollars per square yard to do an overlay. And it brings you back up to a hundred and then you get another, you know, few years out of it as it, it falls back down. And because we have a PCI fifty-six, we've got a lot of streets that this is the world that we're living in. And, uh, residents that are on these streets, you know, they notice significant deterioration. Whereas if we had been doing slurries, then it's in a lot better condition. So we have, um, some data from the last two kind of construction projects that we've done that really helps illustrate this with real dollar amounts. So we had a twenty-twenty-two slurry seal and digout project. And we put one point seven million dollars of construction funds for eight point three miles. So if you do that math, it ends up being two hundred and five thousand dollars per mile. If you take our seventy-three miles of, of, uh, streets and you slurry every six years, you would need to put in a minimum of two point five million dollars per year. Now, this is assuming that all your streets are good. Ours are not. And this doesn't include, uh, design and testing, so it's really three million. If you don't put at least three million dollars a year, you're not going to be able to keep your pavement in good shape. Now, we also did an overlay project for three point six miles and that cost three point eight million. Do the math on that and you're at one point one million dollars per mile. That's five times the amount of money if you waited until it was an overlay. Now, the recent investment prior to twenty-twenty-three was one point two five million dollars a year. Our twenty-twenty-two pavement maintenance program shows work, assuming one point two five million dollars a year. Because that was really all that we could count on when that report was written. We've had, um, the fortunate event of being able to put approximately five point five million dollars per year in last year's and this upcoming one in order to do work. That's why it makes sense to restrategize what we're going to do for this upcoming project. This just illustrates what, uh, a year's worth of one point two five million dollars per year is. The, there's a, a program called Street Saver. All of our streets are in it. They take a look at the condition of the road from a real ten thousand foot view. And says, based on an algorithm, here's the work that you should do. You got some, you know, overlays and some crack seals and some, you know, slurries. But it's scattered all over the town and it, it's really all over the place. This is how we are going to be able to have a project minimum of five point, let's say eight million dollars for this upcoming project. And this is the funding where it's coming from, uh, two point four million from the general fund. You've got some SB one money, which is some state tax money at four hundred fifty thousand. Sales tax fund of, uh, two million with carryover of about half a million. You've got, um, community development block grant money of about sixty thousand dollars a year. And the sidewalk sales tax fund. You add all of that up and you end up with five point eight million. So at this point in time, we need to decide what to do with this five point eight million. It doesn't make sense really to follow what the pavement maintenance program, because that assumes you only had one point two five. This allows us to look at a grander scale of what's going on. I've spent hours staring at this map. This is from the pavement maintenance plan and what it does is it color codes all of our streets based on their condition, based on their PCI. What you'll notice is that there are some groupings, some neighborhoods where all the streets fall in that core range. So I talked to our pavement consultant, who by the way is here and can help answer questions, um, Joe Riley. And so look at this and go, is there a way for us to apply this five point eight million dollars in a really meaningful way? Uh, all of these would suggest that they would need, based on their PCI, suggest that they would need heavy rehabilitation. But through some strategic deflection testing, we should go out and measure how much the road bends when weight is put on it. It might suggest that another treatment might be plausible, such as overlay. So they went out and they did deflection testing on those areas that have circles. Because they suggested that those were neighborhood style projects. You'll see X's crossed out on the private developments and also there's an X on the equestrian area. And that's because that was done in this last project. Right, some considerations on why this approach might make sense. One of them is when you do that real, all over the city project, you end up with lots of traffic control plans and lots of encroachment premature all over the place. Whereas if you do a neighborhood style, that you're really focusing your work in neighborhood areas. Uh, when you have one prime and numerous subcontractors with, with Markup, because you have several different treatment types, the project gets more expensive. Whereas if you can focus on one treatment type, in this case overlays, the project ends up being, um, more cost effective. The larger you have one single treatment type, the lower the unit cost. So you really get an economy of scale by being able to put a large amount of money into one single project. And also, um, potential contractors like these bigger projects. And therefore we're likely to get a more competitive price on it because more contractors will be interested in it. So our consultant came back with a list and my jaw dropped because I was shocked at the results. So I'll walk through what's here. So what you see is you see the location where those circles were in that previous time, given the names, just to help distinguish them. So you have the stagecoach area, the ranch of Grandy Face Warren, the Brighton area, Stationway, which is just a single street. Uh, Andre Drive and its environment, uh, Woodlands and its, um, neighborhood and then Vila Baranca. And in the pavement maintenance program, it estimated what the cost would be based on its PCI. When you look at the cost based on the testing, which really starts to hone in on the proper treatment needed for it, what you'll notice is that those top three on there are significantly lower than the pavement maintenance program identified. Because we're getting at it on a, um, strategy of getting to it before it falls to the next treatment needed. I've also included the amount of work that needs to be done on, uh, ramps. Whenever you do a rehabilitation, you need to do the curb ramps as well. So I've had to fold those costs into here as well. So then you add the cost of the curb ramps plus the cost based on testing, you get a total estimated cost. And then the final column is the savings from the pavement maintenance program. I have listed these in order of their savings. I, I've also included cumulative cost and you see if you do the top three projects, you end up at five point six million. We have five point eight million dollars available. And if we do these three projects at this time, we save ourselves about five million dollars in work that we would, that would end up costing us if we deferred this work. So I believe that this is a compelling argument to move forward on these type three, on these top three projects. These other projects are, are worth considering, but that's only if additional funds come about. But with the funding we have available, um, these, these top three really stand out as, as good projects to do. So my recommendation is that we strategize, that we not do the work that was recommended in the PMP. Because we have an opportunity to do projects that, if you notice, there's no way we could have done them prior. Cause all the total cost estimated, all were above the one point two five million. And in fact, in the pavement maintenance plan, none of these three neighborhoods ever showed up being done in the next ten years. So the, the pavement would have continued deteriorating. So this is an opportunity to really use this funding in a cost-effective manner to address, um, some, some pavement that, that could really lose some love. Uh, so that's why restrategizing makes sense. There will, may be some residents on those streets that are shown in the pavement maintenance program that will say, hey, this plan that you approved said. hey, this plan that you approved said you were going to take care of my street in this year. So I wanted to make sure that council was comfortable with deviating from that in order to take advantage of these projects. And then to use the priority table that was presented to determine what our project scope would be, along with some other minor work that's associated with pavement maintenance, such as striping, concrete work and pedestrian improvements based on funding that may become available in the near future, such as the potential of that betterment's grant uh, that may uh, come to be, but we don't know at this time whether or not we'll be successful at it. Uh, I'm open to any questions and uh, Joe Riley has graciously um, offered to be able to answer any questions you might have as well. Thank you.
Let me start with you, Councilmember Seacrest.
Um, yeah, I'm always amazed because this obviously takes a lot of work. And, and um, I didn't start understanding anything about pavement and how expensive it was until I was running for this office. And if you, if you sit through one of these presentations, you start to realize how important this is. And as you say, the economies of scale and also really how important time is. Um, and you just can't let this go. So I would be certainly in favor of your proposal. I'm, I didn't quite understand, are there people, there's people that were thinking they were going to get um, help with their neighborhoods and they're not going to be getting that now? And then would, would they be repri- would they be next on the list or how does that work? I didn't quite understand, sorry.
Thank you for that question. I, I could imagine that if I grabbed that report and I lived on one of the streets that were shown, I'll just bring that up real quick, um, that was shown on this. And I would say, okay, it's twenty twenty-four. I live on that street that's colored blue. Why isn't this being done? Um, now the heavy maintenance is a uh, slurry with digouts. So one of the things that I've done is looked ahead to see whether or not a slurry project for next year makes sense. And I asked our consultant whether deferring those by a year would make a big difference. And the answer was no. So what I'm envisioning is that this year is this overlay project attacking those three neighborhoods. And next year would be a culmination of these slurry sales for multiple years. Again, to make a single one type of maintenance project to really again buy into that economies of scale. Thank you, if I make sense.
I have no questions.
Yeah, I, I do have a couple of questions. Um, so when we did the uh, uh, equestrian area, what, what sort of PCI do we have there now after that, after we did that project that?
Okay, so um, this, sorry. Uh, this shows that the PCI basically comes back to um, new pavement. So you can call that.
We'd now say it's a hundred.
It's now.
It's probably going to wear out faster.
Yes, it's now back to a hundred.
And, and so for this kind of an area, doing the slurry coat every eight years isn't going to make much difference. It's.
It's beyond that, yeah, a, a slurry coat doesn't.
Even after we've done the work we did, we, we brought it back to a hundred.
I'm sorry, yes. So six years from now, we would then do a slurry on here.
And we might get.
It falls back into.
Into that pattern, okay. So, so I guess one thing that strikes me when we, you know, I mean, that's not a quarter of the city or anything, but we've taken it from probably in the fifties all the way up to a hundred, but we only gained one point overall in PCI? Because we went from fifty-six to fifty-seven?
Okay.
Citywide, yeah, citywide, yes.
So um, I've actually asked for a proposal to recalculate our PCI following these projects. Uh, so I have that proposal and it's a few thousand dollars. Um, but I didn't want to be presumptuous at what council would um, approve before dropping those new numbers into it to do that calculation. Once we know what the project looks like, then we, then we'll calculate that new PCI and bring that to, to council's attention.
So for instance, we, we could end up with a projection of the PCI after the project's done?
Correct.
Okay. And then how do we select the streets that we decided to test? And, and how many more streets should we test?
Okay, so the, it's from that map that I stared at for hours.
Circles, yeah.
Yeah, um, so the way that I did it was um, things that are green, those are very good. Those are in that slurry seal range. Those are still in the range that a slurry seal is the appropriate. Um, and same with blue, you know, blue, you can get away with a slurry seal and dig out. Once you fall into that yellow, which we have so very little yellow on here. Once you fall into that orange, the question is, can you stay in orange and not fall into red? Because a red is a full depth reclamation and it costs at least double. In fact, the best way to approach that is with this list. These numbers cost on the PMP assumed full depth reclamation for those top three projects. And that's what it would have cost double what the overlay is, that is the recommendation for three, these three neighborhoods. So what we're doing is we're catching these three neighborhoods before they fall into that next step.
Yes, so I guess we selected these orange areas, there's lots of other orange areas as well. So what was, and, and are those areas somewhere we just don't think is worth testing? Or we just haven't gotten around to testing it or?
I just focused on neighborhoods, um, mostly because when you're doing deflection testing, um, you can make the assumption that if it's a neighborhood, it was all.
Done at once.
Done at once. So it allows us to be very um, cost-effective in our deflection testing. Um, because we can then say, well, that entire neighborhood, since it was all built at once, all of it can, can follow the same treatment.
Okay.
But you're right, we do have a lot of additional streets that could benefit from this, but we are already out of money. We can't even do um, all of them that we did our deflection testing on.
Okay, no, I, I, I understand that. I was, I just thought there was maybe some, some part of the, the pavement index study that we did that told us where we might have better opportunities.
No, we just looked at, at large groupings of um, poor pavement.
Okay, and so then um, this project you're talking about tonight would be in the twenty-five, twenty-six year. If, uh, when we start talking about next year, I just, I just wanted, because this year we're going to finish the slurry coat this, this. So, so would this be done in the fall of twenty-five?
That is, no.
I mean, the fall of twenty-four?
We are in twenty-three, twenty-four now.
Right.
We hope to build this in twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, and so when you said next year for the, the, that would actually be twenty-six, twenty-six?
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Twenty-five, twenty-six, okay. Okay, um, those were my questions, alright, thank you. Alright, and with that, I'll open it to the public, uh, any questions or comments from the public?
I do have one question. So it looks like deflection testing has saved, or has a potential to save a lot of money. My question is, over the years, should we expect more deflection testing this? Or is this deflection testing more of an opportunistic uh, uh, thing?
Yeah, so let, I'm sorry, let's go online and see if there's any questions online, thanks.
There are no members of the public online.
Alright, thank you. So yeah, if staff can respond to the one question we had, that'd be great, thanks.
I'd be happy to. Um, so one of the interesting things about pavement is you can't necessarily just look at it and know what kind of treatment is appropriate for it. Because if you looked at the streets in these neighborhoods, like you go, there's, there's no saving this. It, it looks like it needs full-on uh, dig out, you know, to replace the whole thing. So what the deflection testing does is it tests how much the pavement moves. And if there's enough there, structure-wise, then putting two inches of an overlay, or in some places, three inches, um, is sufficient to be able to revert back to that PCI of one hundred. If there's too much deflection testing, it's indicating that there's just not enough structure there and you need to pull it out and rebuild it from the ground up. So uh, I am happy to have done the deflection testing to provide a pre-design of sorts to enable us to really look at the funding that's available and align it best with the treatment. Um, and it is something that I would recommend that we do on a yearly basis when having projects that are the, uh, is it an overlay, is it a reclamation? That kind of testing is not necessary when it's simply a maintenance project, because the pavement is still, has enough structure to it that the deflection testing isn't warranted. I, I do, I, sorry, I do have a couple of other items that have been brought to my attention that might be good for a council and the public to know. And one of them was, why do we have a higher budget this year um, than we did in the past? Um, some of it is carryover. Uh, during the pandemic, uh, we really um, kind of battened everything down and didn't spend as much because we weren't sure about what revenues would come in. And we now had the opportunity, that's what this last year's project was, was the opportunity to then, you know, expand our project. Um, there is some revenue surplus that is being applied this time that doesn't exist in um, most years. Uh, after this project, uh, we've taken a look at uh, the funding that's available and it uh, will revert back to um, the, the one point two five to one point seven five uh, million dollars per year. So these are um, unique years. They aren't, that we can't anticipate this kind of funding given our current circumstances.
With that, I think we'll move on.
Go ahead.
That we'd move on to council comments.
Okay, sorry. Thought you were moving on further than that.
Oh, yeah. You were looking for Jeremy, weren't you?
Still sore about the whole Mayor Protem thing, but. Um, yes, thank you. So I am delighted to hear this information and it, I think that it's, it's a great advertisement for the deflection testing, the fact that when you went back and, and did the testing, some things are looking better than maybe we thought. And layperson here, but it sounds like we're actually, the estimates come in much lower, so that's great. I appreciate the comment about the um, the extra reserves, because I think that we were, we voted on that and that was a big deal, that, that, those reserves were there and that we could put it towards uh, this very expensive project, which never goes away. Um, and I appreciate your comment about the la- last year and this year being unique and getting the funding up to five million, because that is, that's not normal and we don't have that normally and the public needs, needs to understand that. Um, so I appreciate all that everyone's done and I would certainly be in favor of restrategizing and um, following, you know, what, what you all feel is appropriate. Thank you.
Councilmember Barnich. Uh, thank you, excellent staff report, Ms. Sweeney. I am sorry, we didn't get to hear from Joe. We always like to hear from Joe, but I'm happy to see his face in the audience, so that's good. Um, and yes, makes a lot of sense. Happy that staff has dug into it and um, came up with this genius solution to save the city and the taxpayers' money and makes a lot of sense and I'm ready to move forward, thank you.
So I'm, I'm too ready to move forward. I, I do, I do think we should note here that this is about a hundred percent return on investment. Uh, you know, we, for five million dollars, we're going to save five million dollars. It's, it's hard to beat that, um, even in the rising stock market. But uh, I, I do have one concern and that is, you know, when we look at, at the eight-year slurry coat plan, we're way behind eight years. And I, I understand that we can look at a road and say, hey, it doesn't really need it. This is still a better investment and I'm not doubting that. I am concerned that we're, you know, either, either the engineering report that says we have to do it eight years is, is wrong. And actually it's every twelve years, because that's at best where we're at. That I, I am concerned that if we don't, you know, if we're going to do some slurry coating this year on the, on the good stuff, and I don't know how much, how much of it's left to be slurry coated, there's, there's not that much good stuff. Um, that once we finish this year, I, I don't know whether we're half done with having the whole thing slurry coated, you know, in, in, in eight years or not, or even close to that. But that, that is a concern I have. Uh, I, I understand two different projects going on at the same time. I did have, have, have one final question I want to ask. And we're going to have the trafficway bridge going at the same time that we have, I think, this project going. And do you see that as a conflict at all? I, I think they're pretty far apart, but I, I did want to ask about that.
Certainly, good question and I can appreciate the concern. So right now, we are working diligently on the trafficway bridge replacement project. Um, with the right-of-way portion of it, our goal is to go, to have the design completed in um, late summer, go out to bid in the fall and winter. And construction is currently scheduled for April through December of twenty twenty-five. I really was anxious to have this conversation today, because that would enable us to be able to design this project, get it out to bid in the summer, have it constructed the winter of twenty-five, so that we, or twenty-four to twenty-five, so that it would be completed in advance of trafficway bridge replacement.
Okay. Um, and so with that, I'll, so, so in the form of a motion, do we just want to approve the, the pavement management program for, I'll call it the next pavement management program? And are we also approving the, the list of priority? Or do you only need the, the approval of this particular project?
Uh, Mayor Protem, we'd recommend uh, just forming the recommendation based on the three components of staff's recommendation. So that is the priority list, um, the authorization to the city manager for additional projects, should funds become available, and the sequel exemption.
Mister Mayor Protem, I would move uh, that we approve a priority list in the staff report of the streets for the twenty twenty-four pavement management program. We authorize the city manager to choose the remaining projects on the list to maximize the project size and cost efficiency if more fu- funds became, become available, along with the minor work associated with pavement maintenance. And find this project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under the class two exemption, which applies to replacement or reconstruction of existing structures.
The second.
Okay, we have motion and second, if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnich?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Guthrie?
Yes. So I'm supposed to leave by nine, probably, huh? So with that, we'll move on to council communications. Let me start with Councilmember Barnich.
So let's see, just two things I wanted to know, are we done with the noisy work in the village? I think we are.
The simple answer is yes.
Yay, awesome, excellent, okay. And then the other uh, comment I wanted to make that I think is new, that is great, it are, the staff reports have the little links in them to where other things are attached, um, not right in the staff report. I think that's handy to have that in there, so I appreciate that. Those are all my comments.
Uh, no comment, except for just seconding uh, councilperson Barnich's view. Having the staff reports embedded in the items is very, very helpful and thank you for that.
And I have no comments and so with that, we're adjourned. Seven oh eight, I didn't break the record, I didn't break the record. It's safe. We had no proclamations. And we did $100. Just saying.
Oh, Jessica, Mike said there's some delay. He told me he's watching the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. He said it's like watching a bad film. What for?
We're, we're, our mouth, mouth don't match up to the.
Oh. Here we go, that's it.